Hello, everybody. Welcome to our committee's open meeting. Do I have to call it to order or just call it to order? All right, no roll call unless you want to take one. Do you want to do a roll call? We never do. We usually do one. I can't remember today. I'm sorry. Yeah, then go ahead and take a roll call.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dietrich?
Here.
Councilmember Pointer?
Here.
Councilmember Sherbering?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
All right, everybody's here. And first item tonight for our community school agenda is the Westbrook Development. Wes Shulte is here to discuss this with us today. Do you want to do an introduction, Tim?
You know, where they would sit and everything like that, we don't want to leave them Friday, but it will be in addition, another 24 units over and above the 12 currently there and the 12 currently under construction. Again, there'd be an additional 24 is what we'd be discussing. Water and sewer is all teed up. Really, it's ready to roll. We just need to, kind of like what we talked about before, just a development agreement on that one thing, right, Tim?
Correct.
So. Yeah, so just some clarity from the council and keep it rolling, so.
And you do two, you'll slam two in this time instead of doing 12 and 12?
Well, with the, with the weather and. You know, it'd be nice to get a foundation in, but the goal would be to start on one this fall. I don't know if I can get it in rain and then close this winter, but start and then have another 24 coming online next year.
Basically, you're looking at doing the same.
Same development agreement. The difference is, is this last one we did on the 12 flex, this most current one that we've got, we had $25,000 in forgivable loan, not forgivable. It was a
Zero interest.
Zero interest payback loan. We don't have that $25,000 in the bank to do that again. It's that revolving loan that we haven't when it comes back yet. So I'm not sure Wes, because I know that was one of the sticking points we used with this last one, how we're going to build. That's up to the council, how you either want to increase that revolving loan somehow or reissue it, or we're just going to be looking at a 10-year 85% tax rebate.
That $25,000 is all we ever had in that kid.
Well, it was $50,000. He paid back half of it.
Right, that's why we loaned out the other one.
The other half went back out.
Otherwise, we'd have to increase that $50,000. Increase that.
The council making the determination, we're going to increase our revolving loan fund. So we've used it before. We used it when Lextron did their expansion a number of years ago, and at that time, $50,000, pretty bit of money. Economic development, you look at it, do we maybe need to kick that up to 100,000 so we have that? Again, it's a revolving loan, so pays us back as we go. It's something we can use. Developers like it because it kind of helps them with their bridging for their stuff there too. So it's, it's a decision the council has to make.
Where does the money come from for the revolving fund?
You, you have a couple of options. We can borrow it. We can try to use some money in our franchise fees that we have.
The existing one that we have currently was from, it was here when I started. So we've had it for over 20 years, and I think it was, it was with one of the other industries, maybe, maybe Lextron that they had got it for, or was it Xide? It could have been.
I think it was Xide.
It was, it's some, it's just money that we've had for quite a long time, and that, that fund that we've utilized as the revolving loan.
Okay.
I, I think that's counterproductive for us. You know, if the money's available someplace else, I think that's somebody else's.
Yeah, especially if we pay you interest.
Yeah.
That's all.
So, um, the staff will look into it. We'll get back to you. We're getting ready to start budget season. So we're going to have some conversations as we look at our capital improvement plans, as we look at this type of stuff. But just so you're aware of what we're looking at as far as that revolving loan fund.
Brian, what do you think in terms of borrowing?
Um, right now, no, no problem. I guess just look and see if, if we could finance, you know.
I don't know if we could do a TIF draw, where we could look at our TIF for that, to utilize.
Yeah.
To funding for that.
There's some possibilities we can look into.
We'll look at alternatives that are out there.
So I think the, one of the things that would help me is just some clarity, like an LOI similar to what we did on previous one. If you guys are in an agreement on the development agreement, so to speak, then other detail can get ironed out. But if you guys are in agree, in agreement, then it would help me get going this fall as the paperwork continues to roll.
Have you brought to everybody numbers of what you're kind of looking at yet? I mean, or is what the next unit's going to cost or anything?
So it'd be right at 3.8. That includes a garage.
Okay. So, um, and I think on the 30th, we'll have that. Council can direct staff to prepare a development agreement, which then allows me to issue a letter of interest.
Looking at the expansion of that revolving loan, where we can get it.
We'll look at that, continue on that as well. But right now, what we're going to look at is getting that letter of intent put together. Proceed with this financing and get stuff lined up.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for the chat.
We have questions. Is there anything else on this? We can move on. All right.
You go. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Oakview subdivision.
I had been approached by S and R Construction, who is doing Oakview subdivision. They would like to get started on phase two. They are filling up out there. He's looking to build or dig another basement this week. I think he's got two houses that are available right now and one sort of duplexes. So he's looking at phase two, which would be another 18 dwelling units. Problem cause, cost, opinion of cost, is it just shy of $1 million? So what we've done with his development and with Wes's East development was it was a 50/50. 50% was a grant, the other 50% was forgivable loan. If he builds it out and brings in the property taxes to pay off that forgivable loan, that covers his costs after 10 years. If it's not covered, then he owes us back whatever remaining portion of the forgivable loan. Right now, there are 16, you know, 12, 13, uh, at least 20 dwelling units set up out there. Yeah. And the average house out there is running about $400,000. He is looking at doing some smaller ones where he was looking at doing condos or the attached single families. Those are about 1500 square feet with two-car garage, trying to scale them down a little bit to make them a little bit more affordable. But affordable is depend upon what you can afford. So I think that brings that cost down to about 380. 370 by 380 is where I think he's at with those, depending on what he does. It's been a good addition. It's turning, it's moving. We're seeing a lot of construction that's less than two years old, so. Council first do this development agreement is if we're going to set up the same way we have the current development agreement with him, be a 50/50 where we reimburse him for installing the infrastructure and the cost there. But upfront are our costs, and we reimburse him for those expenditures. We don't have that sitting in the bank. So that is something we would have to borrow money for in order for us to do this agreement.
For the forgivable base.
Well, it's estimated about 500,000. But that means we're collecting $500,000 in property taxes off that development.
Can we get that money out of TIF, or does that have to come from?
If we use residential TIF in this area, because it's not slum and blighted, we'd have to set aside 37% for low to moderate income housing. We can do that. I know the city of Dwyer uses that to help with their down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers that meet their criteria. They also do it for house repairs for people that live in their homes. Kind of like what the community development block grants with CDBGs used to be able to do, because we used to be able to get those. The ECI handles that form, a lot of that. We can also use that to our housing trust fund with ECI. They handle all the requirements for the low to moderate income standards and do the testing and stuff like that. But it is a state penalty to use LMI funds for that.
We did use them for the Cro- Croman development, but we didn't use them for the first phase of Oakview.
And Meadowbrook was exempt from that because that was classified as slum and blight. So they didn't have to have the LMI set aside on it.
You're looking at town and see where we can look for funds for that then, for Oakview.
There's not grant funding available. This just doesn't. It's, are we going to invest in bringing people into town and growing the population? We've done this with developments for commercial properties, trying to bring jobs here.
But we will get the tax.
We will get tax based off of this. Again, we have a legislative policy committee meeting Wednesday with the Iowa League of Cities Annual Conference. And there's been discussions that property taxes is back on for consideration with the legislatures, so.
It would be general obligation bonds if we borrowed for it. And part of what we do as we go into the budget season is look at what projects are coming up, because in order to save fees for borrowing and with attorney costs, we try and lump as many projects into one borrowing as we can, so. Yeah, just to save on the cost. So, um, yeah, I don't know how soon Steve needs to know, but it will be something, you know, early on that we'll be looking at.
I know he'd like to get things up and going, because he still has to get the engineer, put things together. We still have to get permits from DNR to extend water, extend sewer pipe. Those need permits. Jason, what else do we have waiting on that, other than the plans for the roads and stuff like that? So that stuff can be done in the winter.
Yeah, that's an estimate. I mean, we'll know the exact cost and sort it out and get, get the little two people. I mean, hopefully, conservative. So that million dollar or just shy of a million dollars is meant to be kind of a worst case. Hopefully, you got a good bidding environment like you've had for the last couple of years, and you'll end up being able to do better than that.
Just like a part of money, you know, I think this is a situation where we need to, because we need to keep the above funds. I mean, housing is such a huge thing that this at least we're getting money now, you know. This, this is something which we borrow the money, but it comes back to us, and that's, we just have to put it out there.
Well, we've been fortunate with what Wes has done, and each project, like Joe Hillburn says, each project's different. And the location's different, because it's not always slum and blight, whether it's apartment complexes. And again, we're putting higher density by doing that, condensing. And Wes's subdivision with what he's proposing with the two 12plexes, the sewer's there. It was installed earlier for the other development. So it's a leisure to go with his and help him with that one. This one is Greenfield. It's not LMI housing, but it's still meeting a need. We're getting people moving to town. Neighbors moved down across the street this weekend. They came from Montana. People moved in two houses down. They came from Nashville. So we're seeing people coming in from outside the county, which is helping our population base. If you look at Google Manchester Population, we're back above 200 or 5200 again. That's what we need to do to keep growing and surviving. We're trying to address the needs for the industries. Wes has been working with our industries as well to try to get people in here. So I hate for us to stop.
And we will potentially be having a phase two of West Side Estates, I would think, at some point coming. He's got those condos pretty well filled. I think he's got another set to go.
He's got the foundation in, yeah, and he wants to start working on four more lots on the smaller side, and then four more lots that were the same size condos he's building right now. And he's making progress on that. He's pouring a lot of concrete. I met with him on Friday, so he's making progress. He'd like to get things going to. Everyone's ready to go, so.
Well, if I can throw something out there, if not, I can do quite a few different communities, there's not that much growth happening in some of these smaller towns. So it's pretty incredible, give them an environment that we have and the opportunities that we have. It's, it's, yeah, it's pretty tremendous, the, the activity that's going on. So it's pretty cool.
Okay, and just, that's a heads up for you.
Is Joe wanting personal foundation, so he can keep going into? Is he going to be able to do that?
Yeah, you don't have to have a road in poor foundation, but the issue you run into, though, is the building permit, finishing everything else off before you have a road and moving people in. That's a little bit of the heck, hiccup we have right now, because there are people living up there, and he's trying to pour concrete, but he's got to figure a way to get them in and out. So that's not ideal.
It's on the street project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll keep moving forward. We'll bring stuff back to you, though.
I think we can probably get a rough idea of what we're going to look at for borrowing, potentially, depending what the council decides, to give you a rough idea, so.
With Joe wanting for two, we're going to be funding, looking at getting funding for him later down the road.
Yeah, that's the reason I'm trying to combine things as much as I can.
That's what I was kind of thinking, if we can all get it all on one side, side deal.
It sounds like rates are going to start to be moving in the right directions.
Any further questions on it? On the next item, bow hunting requests within the city limits.
I have had a request from a resident would like to do bow hunting with inside the city limits, but it's a targeted area. It is on the fringe of town along the Mokoka River area, so it's not next to residential houses. It's on the west side of towns along the Mokoka. But in order for them to be able to bow hunt in town, the council has authorized it, and we, if we're going to do that, want to restrict where that occurs, and it's on private property. So they have to have property owner's consent. The city of El Cator does allow this in their community. They have a permit that the person has to sign off on. Property owner has to sign off and agree to it and designate things in order for them to do, to do this. Is the council having any concerns, or is this something that you have an interest in providing permission for someone to bow hunt on private property in town?
I do. I can do it in my backyard if you want. Not many people around us, and they shoot straight at you.
Ben, do you have any concerns?
I think that the permit route is probably the best, that way we're not signaling now or just saying one. If anyone wants to do that, I think if the council's decision to individually decide where the location is proposed, if you issue that. I would be approved of that sort of thing. The office second session should be fine. Yeah, yeah, so it'd be, that permit would be more so not necessarily two, but the way in which the name is essentially. That way it can kind of be controlled and our NFS can keep knowing that something would happen where they're, you can always come back and determine who has the permit to allow.
It's actually given to property. It's not given to the first guy in the hunt.
Well, both.
Both.
Yeah, say both would have that permit, and they, they should carry it with them. Mm-hmm.
Well, and that knocks down your also, you know, because if one guy hears about it, then you're going to have 35 other people, hey, I want to bow hunt now. And if you limit it to, you've got to have the permission of the property owner, then you just knock it out right now.
And even if it is the property owner that's doing it, I want the permit be issued. They have to request it from us.
Right, right.
Does that tie in with what the state has for, you know, issuing a year on their properties? Because they're giving farmers, if I remember, at the Farm Bureau, when they were talking about, they were trying to pass legislation that farmers can shoot, or, you know, a year on their own property or something like that. So that can.
Well, you still have to have a tag, and that's where they have to get the tag.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was so.
Well, I'm on the 30th agenda.
Yes.
By proof that the issue is, have a tag. Right, or, I mean, essentially, the state laws are always certain of that anyway. Even the city can be more restrictive. We just can't be much restrictive. So we're just having another later to allow.
So they still have to have a tag.
When they, when we do the, the permit, the offering of the permit, then the council have to approve that permit given each time?
Yes.
The bad part of that is, is what the tag is, what season the tag is.
I'm not as worried about them having the tag on hand, just getting the timing for them to get the permission from the council. They have to plan it out because council meets twice a month.
I guess I, you know, if they're going to get landowners, I guess I'd like to see him sign off, just because he can check the area researching, so it's not ballpark or.
No, it's, yeah.
We'll put that on the agenda for next meeting.
So I'm just a player.
Yeah, no, no, he's makers.
Right.
Okay. Right enough direction on that one?
Yes.
Next one, I think we talked about this, brought it up regarding metal siding restriction.
Yeah. Planning zoning commission did review this, and their opinion was not to change the ordinance. If the council wishes to change ordinance, you'll have to make that proposal. It still goes before planning zoning commission for their review again. And their recommendation goes into the council, the council can vote to approve the recommendation or override the recommendation. The override, I believe it is for fifth requirement. Right, Plank's one is recommendation. Is there a direction from the councils to what you want me to do as far as the ordinance?
Biggest problem I have with it is, I got a neighbor down the road who's got metal siding in the neighborhood. I got one across the street, and he's got metal siding in his buildings. And he's got one in the acre, but that's a bunch of lot. Then you start looking at other people are coming up and asking to put metal sided garages detached in their backyard in an area where there's other metal sided buildings, but. A lot of it had come from, I would still like to move forward with it detached. I mean, I have a metal sided shed in my backyard. So it's just, as long as it's not attached to the house. I didn't like it because of fires. You know? Just like a big tin box, you don't know what's inside. Sending in two guys, three guys, you know. Steel roof guy either, but you don't know, the raptors are gone, you don't know what's there unless you get out the K12 and actually cut a hole. I mean, that's commercial, I understand.
So I need to discuss why they're against it, I mean.
I, I think part of it is size. Well, it's the size of the, of the building that's going to be a steel sided. You know, if you do a maximum 1200 square foot garage, 30 by 40, and it's steel sided, does that fit in place with the residential structure, residential nature of the area? I think that was part of their concern. The other issue, you know, we look into, and I think we're talking about still review, we still need to revise, is the storage containers in residential areas. We've got three of them right now that I know of that are in a residential area that don't belong in the residential area, and part of the way to remove those is the steel siding.
Change what planning and zoning has suggested. And the reason is because we have people on these committees making decisions. They are citizens. They made this decision. I don't really want to go against what they have decided, because I don't think that's fair to ask a bunch of citizens to volunteer for something and then turn around and say, but we're not overriding. I just don't like to do that. And so for that reason, I would just start with it, and I can tell each other.
Agree, I don't want to be changing their decision to do that. Right?
I guess I, I don't have a problem with the steel doors. I really don't. I have one in my backyard, so. I don't have a problem with it. I think some of the colors now look a lot better than some of the siding that has moss grown. You know, you look around town and, and you see a nicely dressed up steel sided shelves anymore. I mean, they're, they're becoming popular. You go into almost any, any, any small town now, you're going to see, you go into, what is it? Quasque, I mean, there's three or four of them coming in there, and they're beautiful. I'd love to have one just like it. I mean, matter of fact, that's what I want to build if I ever get out on an acreage, so. I guess my view is, is that I, I wouldn't have a problem going, changing, changing it to allow it, but there again.
Are you talking, just for clarification, Brian, are you talking if it's on an acre lot, or are you still talking smaller residential?
No, I think, I think if you had an acre, a larger lot. You know, if you get down into the smaller lots and get down into the town, then you, you're going to have, I think you're going to have people left. But if you get out to the edges of little bit bigger, bigger houses, then I think I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Well, one of the challenges, just for planning zoning standpoint of it, is when you look at that stuff, you have to look at, it's applicable across the town, and so would, would that be something you want to see on Union Street? So those are the things you kind of look at and say, okay, does it make sense? Or how do you exempt them?
What's the square footage tolerance right now for any attached building?
1200 square feet.
1200 square feet.
That's the maximum.
So that's 30 by 40.
They're legal non-conforming buildings. Yeah, I don't know.
All of the city.
Yeah.
So would that mean they'd have to take that site off?
No, they don't have to make any changes. Yes.
So what about a small one, you buy from Menard, eight by eight to around?
Yeah, those are utility sheds that are small. Tim, how do you handle those? Dude, I think there's.
First of all, most of them.
They're supposed to have a permit.
Yeah. For the bottom weekend, I'm not driving off, I couldn't tell.
Can't really get in somebody's backyard.
I can't tell somebody's shed in their backyard last week or. Steel siding itself or residential steel siding except to direct. For residential. Yeah, so. It'll be shit, it's like blue ones that sell salt in town.
The barn steel.
But some of the, some of the steel that you can get now that is, um, there's, it's still considered barn steel, but it has the uh, architectural look, you you know, the hoop look. And and some of that is beautiful and looks beautiful, but it's still, still, you know, it's. Made by the same people, but it, you know, you can get it different, instead of that valley look, you can get it in that hoop look. It's really beautiful. I think your awning is our, your awning.
Standing seams still.
Yeah, yeah, they're very elegant.
Commercial.
Commercial.
It's a wider rim than fasteners.
Yeah. That's what I mean, I'm on the fence with that, because if you went that way, you you could really dress the house up.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, the way I'm just like garage even. You know, garage or utility shed or something like that being steel.
Well, it might be just. A proposal being that it's just a hidden fastener, you can't have exposed fasteners. Because that takes away that commercial look.
Do you need more direction on that?
Not this time.
All right, is everybody having questions? Okay. Um, let's see, next we have the noise, noise ordinance review discussion.
Yeah, Captain Wright approached me regarding our noise ordinance, uh, it only pertains to noise coming from vehicles. Whether it's stereos or loud exhaust and stuff like that, it does not address. Um, someone that is DJing and playing music late at night and keeping the block up. Um, so I have asked Mr. or Captain Wright to research some ordinances, um, look at what might be available to do some amendments to ours. Um, so he is currently doing that right now, but uh. We we had a complaint, um, a couple of weeks ago, uh, because there was music blaring at one AM. And the question is, is how do we regulate that? Uh, it's always been perceived that we have quiet hours between uh, ten PM and seven AM, uh, when we talk to people about. Uh, doing construction for street projects, we always, we don't necessarily let them start much before seven o'clock in the morning. So are, we don't, as I was going through the organs, it really doesn't say it anywhere, it's kind of a writ, unwritten rule. So it might be time for us to have a written rule.
Current uh, noise ordinance now is a desk reading and so make it away. Coming off of the, most of them are like, it's the same way, but again. Right, right, let's talk to articulate what's, the microception of loud. Uh, we just do more or less, a little bit more strict. I just don't hear you, it's not like we're good. Some wanted more so, uh, a lot of times they'll refer to the muffler. I don't know if we should, you know, say, say, so. What, police department, that's. Just block her, I don't even think the state patrol has it, so I don't think most cops need desk reading, they're just for loud exhaust, we kind of let you know where we are. But I I just, it's kind of one of the things, like I got. I know it's a couple of places around, but there's quite a bit of screaming and yelling and stuff going on to all hours of the day and night, and it's just one of those, like, how do you? How will it be written to kind of look at it to try and control it?
And so right now, one of the things we are doing is we're looking at the city of Dubuque's noise ordinance. Uh, it's obviously way more in depth than I think we need to be, they have three colleges in town. Uh, and they have a lot of experience with different things there, so for us to look at that and kind of model, uh, an amendment to our ordinance is what we're gonna look at. Yep.
Uh, next, on street parking twenty four hour restriction review.
And again, we we had another complaint come up, uh, regarding recreational vehicles being parked on the city street for extended periods of time. And when we go through our ordinance, it doesn't talk about trailers, RVs, campers, uh, stuff like that. It only talks about motor vehicles. Trailers are not a motor vehicle, so therefore it's not classified the same way. Uh, so we are looking at amending it, so it mirrors what we have for motor vehicles, they can't be parked on the street more than twenty four hours at a time. Um, and then they have to be relocated, and one of the things the city of Independence does is they require it to be moved three hundred feet away. And so, well, they just move it six inches or a foot one way or the other, it's been moved. So we, we wanna mirror that, maybe three hundred feet's too far, maybe it's a hundred and fifty or fifty feet, but whatever that. Number is, it's not just so they can move around the block, sit right backwards at. I know recreational vehicle parking is going to be a topic that will generate a lot of discussion. Uh, but we've also had a lot of complaints about vehicles being parked on the street or trailers, whether it's a boat trailer. Um, a enclosed trailer or whatever, that's been parked there for periods of time, that it just. Is a blocking vehicle, wouldn't allow cars to be parked that way.
Do we have to stick with the twenty four hour restriction?
We don't have to stick to twenty four, our council can change that to forty eight hours or whatever you'd like, the the challenge we run into is longer. Put that out, uh, we don't always have the same officer on duty at the same time. So who who's keeping track of that? And that's, this is really complaint basis. Um, we don't, we can't chalk tires anymore. Supreme Court says we can't do that, so it's going by and seeing that same vehicle there continuously, or having a neighbor complain. Take pictures and documenting it.
That's a silly question too, what about people who are parking like? Vehicles don't run anymore or using the drive, they're, they're on for parking?
Mm hmm.
I mean, it's not a driveway, it's not on the street, it's actually on their yard, is there something for that?
There there is, that's a nuisance vehicle, that's a junk vehicle, if it's, if it doesn't run, if it doesn't meet the requirements for it to be able to operate it. It's questionable, where in the yard is it parked, is it the backyard, is it the front yard, is it side yard? You know, you know, we we try not to get too picky on some of that stuff, that's supposed to be parked in the driveway.
I think that the whole. Where the cars are parked, how long is parked and stuff, I think that's kind of one. It's a tough one for me personally, I just. Uh, I know we got, in my neighborhood, we got a problem.
My, mine too.
Then, you know, I mean, it's like, it's all on a complaint basis, I get that, you know, there's, they got too much crap up. So there's something that'll be sitting for maybe two months before I'll move it again, you know, so I'm trying to balance that, but there's some people that don't have the luxury of as much area to park things as I did. Everybody looks the same as the next person.
That's exactly right.
Shouldn't inhibit their neighbors from being able to get in and out of their yards?
Right.
Or anything like that?
We've got.
Or back out safely out into the street?
Yeah, there's definitely a fine point, like you, I have dead end street, so I got a little extra water, sometimes that dead end street gets kind of. Crowded, so it's. Yeah, so.
Bringing draft to the October committee meeting.
Yep.
Hey, you ready to move on to the next item? Sewer camera.
Okay, we we talked previously about replacing our sewer camera. Uh, we had a budget item of about a hundred thousand dollars, if I remember correctly from Jason or Perry. It's not budgeted for, we don't have the money in our budget, this is something we're gonna have to work on our budget for the next fiscal year. And try to incorporate that into that budget in order for us to replace it, in the meantime. When we need a camera, we're gonna have to contract out to have someone come in and televise, and we do have a couple options, I don't think we need to televise the entire town next year or anything like that, but. Uh, what we need to do is if we have a blockage where we need to come in and televise or something, we have some options right now, but. Ideally, we'll get this incorporated into our CIP and incorporate it into next fiscal year's budget.
January, February.
Correct. January, February, because we'll have to be done by the end of February now. Oh. Is there anything I left out, Perry or Jason? Okay.
And there's no way to fit it in this year?
Well, I I don't want to do that right now. We're we're still too early in this fiscal year and I don't wanna run the reserves too low.
The current camera still works, right, I know it's completely dead.
Your iPhone.
Borrow your iPhone.
Sure, this is that trailer, right?
This one, yeah.
A hundred grand.
Next, engineering updates, who wants to go first? Oh, we only have Jason. Oh, no, they're, sorry, Ryan, just back there, you're moving into the. There, okay, I'll take, you go first.
Um, I mean, really, we really don't. You know, we haven't talked about yet is commerce court, I think Perry has talked to Jake by. Mainline paving first by October first, I got a hand worker coming in before that to start working on the cul-de-sac a little bit. Uh, but all the underground work out there is completed, still has placed.
So October first, like, done?
No, that's. I had a bill of the month, it should be. It's as good as the information I was given from an hour and a half ago when I talked to the.
Um, East Main Street, the contractor did replace the eighty eight ram on Bailey Drive, you know, that was off this last Wednesday. Uh, they did receive the whole project, uh, and they see it initially, it's been fairly dry since then. So I know there's been, but there's some discussion on whether they should be came. But we saw.
I had talked with Sam about it, but yeah, and the receipt, with the DOT project, you're kind of.
There's no warranty, but no requirement that it grows, they just do the activity and then they put the proper product down. So, um, I guess the number Sam has is seventy fifty dollars, so it's not a big dollar, so the real question is watering, um. I know in the past the city sent out letters after the project, I don't believe that's the standard practice anymore. So the question is, uh, should a letter be sent out or? Get watering, it's been dry again since Wednesday and.
I know some of them are water, some, some are watering, yeah.
And you can tell who too.
Yeah.
There, so.
I think Mickey's owners made it sure what the water did.
Oh, yes, it's, it's gets watered, I mean, I mean, it started a few yards, you can do it every day for. Doing a cost a little money, but it grows.
Well, those people that had water, they, trust me, they called and watered for free, this is the city's project and they want their yards back the way they were.
Right, fathers now.
With a letterhead on, with the city telling someone to water.
That's the way we did it for years and years, so then, then we get the calls about getting free waters. Don't recall, that'd be an issue in the past, but.
We've had some good, good calls where he's.
Well, if Pierce Tovin did the other phase just east of it, that was not a DOT project and. They were watering it twice a week. The ham domain is fine, it's real cheap, probably, you don't have that, so.
That manual cover is better, but it's still tanks, yeah.
What, had the losses?
Yeah, right on the corner there, yeah, it's better, it's way better, but if you hit it right or if you go by.
It's got a gasket in it now, so it shouldn't be able to rattle.
It rattles.
Well, there a couple of times in the rounds, yeah.
I I passed semi gold by there the other day and it rattled, I went over it the other day with my truck and it. Tinked a little bit, no, way better than it was, way better.
So I guess if there's any. Like I said, somebody comes up every fall. Threat of monitoring. And they will, will be one more assessment at the end of this month, we anticipate they can remove your, fall in takes and then. Five month, this semi final, so. The goal is pretty much get through all the creative stuff when we get to that semi. And we can close it out with a small. And when you do close this one out, it will be accepting the project as is, there's no maintenance on with the DOT. Process there, so it's one of those DOT does complete their audit and they will have somebody like them. Be finally set, but we do wanna make sure that it's right and correct and there's no. Sometimes we'll accept things, oh, and there's a tier name of fun, there's not a maintenance problem, I'm saying.
You know, Aaron did have a point, I I'm not real crazy about this, but in a situation where I'm with it. We do have the tanker in that truck and I could get Kevin to potentially do it. That's not, I don't know if it's a practice that we wanna.
You're not watering that pickup.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a practice that we wanna start either, that's.
That's gonna take sewer three, sewer tank.
And it's, it's not really, it's especially, I guess he has, yeah, several phone, you know, and there are a bit of them who. Who pay for water, but the contractors and. Couple years will pay for some, I think with DOT for thirteen, we paid for some waters the same, but usually most, most areas are hesitant to get into the practices of. Watering, you need, something, if you water, it needs to be watered pretty much every day, um, until. That if you can't water, you might go for a week and someone will water it once a week.
Right. Right, so if we don't water it. And then we won't be able to pick up them.
That's where I'm saying.
Then traps in your storm drains.
If, if, this is, it's gonna come back on me at some point anyway.
Right.
So.
So it's final letter, that's all of us.
Yeah, so that's where I'm going with that is that either we're gonna go back there and be scuffing it up and seeding it again, or we pay somebody to water it. Kind of the two options that we have.
If we. Is, is there any idea, just guessing, what it would cost us to water them? Then. Or did not water easements and at some point, guys?
It's not really, it's easy to go, they're working back in some of them yards quite ways.
Something at one time, we have, we have a lot of spots that's running, but it's so, so cold, I'm just trying to think of ideas there.
Yeah, we did a little bit, but that was an extreme situation. Part of that was so we didn't have fire riders freezing, or water lanes.
I'm saying, just shooting from the hip, I think it would be cheaper for us to water it. And then to keep going back and reseeding, because seed's not cheap.
And it's city time.
And I was wondering how like. You get that runoff, erosion off of that, now we're gonna be on that, that's other locations. Just people will take care of it compared to what we had.
The next part is gonna be the the button weed and all this stuff that's growing. The broad, the broad. That doesn't need water to grow.
It's a, it's a tough. It's a tough deal.
Little fire truck, fire trucks.
You know, that's, that's a good example. Look at, they, they seeded that in the, in the dead of the summer behind the station, but I got you guys watered it and it's got grass. So that's. So that's.
I wasn't bringing up that idea.
It's not just basically saying that you can.
You can grow that seed.
Pumped out, she got a new one.
Is Kamala required to? They go to digging up, put this crappy old dirt that nothing grows on? Do they have any kind of deal where they have to take care of that seed?
They maintenance, they repair it back to the wood was there. They're, they're not required to bring in sod or anything like that. We do as, as well as we can, but. We don't have a whole lot of time and energy to chase that stuff down too. This is not just one company, it's all of us.
They didn't do too bad down my road, I don't think.
That was the situation we got into in Canada.
Can live, yeah.
That was the past.
So did you have anything else, Ryan, since we got off topic?
No, I was saying that I was just gonna bring up our. To you in session.
All right. Any questions for either Jason?
Sorry. Jason hasn't moved yet. Who doesn't talk yet?
No, he did. He was talking, talking to Scott.
Okay, anything else? Go ahead.
All right. So we need to get to department updates next then. Um, I'm gonna start at the front. I'll start with Jeff. You can go first.
Okay. Um, we've been working, uh, really hard on the bike hopper, trying to. Wrap that up as much as we can. Uh, Jason's guys helped me out last week when I was taking. Close to nine hundred houses, um, got into a lot of houses during that process. Um. All landlords to get. Um. Their properties taken care of. So it's actually going. Better than it has been. Um, so we'll see what we're, we get to about fourteenth. Then after that, it just becomes one of those things. It's an ongoing effort. It's constantly gonna be updating and changing it. That's, that's street projects progressing. So it's good service, that's what I go. Um. Other than that, we just, we move the hydrant down here downtown, so Jason can put a pretty sidewalk in. And then, no. It's been, it's been evolving, trying to wrap enough valves this month and then we'll start flushifier hydrants beginning of October. Um, we'll try to put some of that on social media and I'll put it on radio, let people know we're doing it. Um, just sometime we can get. Trying to keep everybody happy.
Any questions to chat?
Do you have a, a list of the Gobler? Uh, houses or whatever? I, I don't know if I wanted or not. Here or rainbow up on the north. That's all somebody. Good.
Okay, Jason.
Um, street department wise, uh, like I said, we helped chat with that last week. Got the ADA ramp put in over here. Uh, waiting on Kleesner to come in and put just a small asphalt patch in front of it and that'll be all of that. Yeah. Um, so. Kind of wrapping that up. The paint's pretty much done except for, um. If East Main goes here. And I talked to him today. Uh. First, second week of October, potentially weather and the way things go. So. The prices, if the prices that we have is good, whether it's this fall or whether it's next spring, so. I mean. At least we're ready to go for them when they, when they give us the word. Um, so. That's where that one is at. And. I have. Boat for a, a new street department truck from Rundy's. Um. Forty-six thousand eight fifty-five. And we had budgeted, what you said fifty.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, so, um, state bid on that truck. For twenty twenty-four was forty-six. Uh, oh fifty-seven and it would go up to in twenty-five, in twenty-five to forty-seven oh fifty-one. So we're. Right there. It's local. It's for the Rundy's. Um. It's got the snowplow prep package on it, so I would like to at least put the plow bracket and stuff on this one. So I would have a spare truck now that we would buy a plow right now, but at least I would have a spare. Setup to if one breaks down. So. Uh, I guess I'm asking for permission to secure that truck. Through Rundy's and then it would go on next week's.
The thirty is.
That already have the thirty to be approved through the council. So I just want to be able to secure it, put them out, out here so we can lock it down.
We going to do it for, you go on?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So.
I'd say bye.
I'd say go.
Go for it.
I'll just tell Taylor to get it secured them for us and then it'll.
Come through over this.
Yeah, I'll have Aaron, Brad, it's in there.
And thirty.
Purchase, yeah, go into the dirt.
Yep.
So what would, what's gonna happen is our old unit six, the, the blue truck that we use, you know, for our main truck. That will go down, which has, still has a Tommy gate on it, because I'd put a new Tommy gate on this truck also. That would go down to our water truck and then Perry's old waste water truck that we used this summer would be the one that we would get rid of. Aaron asked me if I could have Taylor at least give us a, an idea what Rundy's would give us, because sometimes we. Chase our tail on selling these, um, sealed in. So I'll ask Rundy's and then we can discuss.
David's had given me a thousand.
That's what, that's kind of what I told Aaron. It's probably gonna be around that with her. Yeah.
I would, I'm very distracted. It's sealed bid and just take what you.
By the time I advertise on it and stuff, I mean, I think you're six and one, half dozen the other.
I'll, I'll.
No monkey with it.
Yeah, I'll see what Taylor says and then we can. Decide what we want to do if it's.
Sure, that money comes back to me.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me. When we do those sealed bids, do we need? First, you know, get as much as we would have gotten on the trade or do we, you get to take a hit on it?
No, usually we get more than what we would have gotten on a trade. In the past, we have. Things have changed.
Depending on which vehicle it is too. Like if it's one of our snowplow trucks or whatever, those ones we usually do really well on.
I do really good on.
The little pickups, it's, it's hit or miss.
It's like the water truck that we're trying to sell the first go around. We didn't get any. Um, so we put another date on it and we're hoping.
This Friday. Haven't gotten.
Throw them in together as a package deal. I won't get one free.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, that's kind of the way, the way that, that will work out. And that should make a pretty decent water truck for another year or two anyway, too, so.
Ben?
So biggest thing for us is we opened up, we know we're already. Applications and. Have rain control for sure. Uh, other than that, that's kind of our main focus is just getting them, because. I know I'm meeting with the school. Apparently they have a homecoming week. Since I have more permission than. Couple of officers are out, so it's been, we need to.
Eric, Ben, excuse me. Okay, um, I, I can't talk to you before you, okay, Chris. Um, Perry.
Crazy, exciting. Uh, the blower that we had down, the old seal was replaced a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the UV sensor was replaced. Everything's back up, running a hundred percent of the plane. Lift station wise, the new lift station that we put in Grayson, K L drive subdivision down there. We were fighting a wiring issue in that, which was all under warranty yet, so. They finally did find the broken wire, so that's set up and running good for. And the brand new pump that we've had for. On site for a month now for the Turkin Timber Lift Station, which is down behind City Shop. Finally got installed. When they ran down to the wire from the building down to the pump, they decided to fill the whole town to it full of gray foam. So we had to. Somebody down there to get it all out, so you pull layers back through, so. Push it up, sorry. And then that, that old pump had been rebuilt not too many years ago, so we are actually keeping that. For a backup pump. This Turkey Timbers Works Lift Station. If we lose a pump there, we're in trouble because. It pumps the most. If so. Um, other than that, we're waiting on, they're still doing a little paint that pool, uh, I think. And then we finished up there. The magic of the third increase one, I think. Placed in the bottom of the, the search tank and stuff. Last summer, this past summer, we're still losing all the water. And then we popped the manhole where the. The mud valve runs due and then with a pretty steady stream of water coming in there. It's been active. It's broke and you gotta kind of go down and hand paint it before you fill it. Well, and you can't get back to it till after the pool's empty, so. But this, you know, it'll get replaced this fall. Hopefully that'll secure the rest of our league, so we've been fighting the pools so. Yeah, we're looking at. Wait. They're not speaking, they get some generators thrown out now while there's. So many out there right now, so.
Is that some of the stuff that Manny simply?
Yes. Yep, for, well, hopefully get two for sure. Maybe three if we can.
Perfect.
But.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, even for us.
Yeah.
When power goes up. Um, Jason's boys and Matt got, uh, early started on cleaning all the stations this year, so they're already done for the fall, so. Everything good, going, going.
Yeah.
Oh, like what? It's halfway down with this twelve blocks. By walking inspections, we're bored to.
And you drive way over here and see. That you'll prime.
I was told this morning they were replacing the tanks. And it was coming, but assholes over the concrete. I don't think any concrete ever.
Anything else, Tim? Any questions for him? All right, I'm gonna say the best for last, Kevin.
Couple of things we got coming up, farm safety. I just found out tonight, September twenty-sixth, the fire extinguisher. Demo, I gotta get some people lined up for that. Homecoming parade is October fourth. Um. We're doing, uh. Pump testing on the trucks, ladder testing and pump test on the ladder truck, yeah. Uh. Two grass rates, the new one is done as of today. Or the next day, we'll have those about both back and save us some memorial money and, uh. Some donations, but then putting those together and then the. Association will donate that to the city then. Somewhere in that range. And then we also ended up, uh. Two thousand point six, so. We're just gonna do a one year. Iowa Falls has done three years. They're trying to get people to do. Two years in a row to help catch some of their expenses. But we're only gonna do one year. So I've been already. So. We're just a kind of higher depth than what everybody else has to do. We got a lot of it set in here already, so. So what we're taking, working on that.
How many does that usually bring you in private commission?
Numbers are way down right now.
Yeah, but people were tired of going to Iowa Falls.
Yeah, they don't wanna go. We were pushing twenty-two to twenty-six hundred sometimes. This will be our fifth time in a row, so.
I'll give them. There's a lot of good one coming. Uh, the other conversation with the whole one is talking about.
Eric will wine after us and then we'll coke it. Back into the one year only, I think they'll get numbers back up, so.
Awesome.
That's it.
Any questions, Tim? All the solar panels working?
They're not up and running yet. They just got, the inspector was just here today. So he has to inspect it, then the Lions got, then twenty-one days or something. Stuff done and. So we're walking now and anybody am on.
I do have one more quick thing.
Absolutely.
Um. The vitality endowment, um, we're work, we've been working with them on new trash cans for downtown.
Oh, cool.
And, um, they're allowing to, to, on two thousand of it. Sarah Mauer sent me a message today, which we were looking at like sixty to one hundred and some dollars for, to. Freshen all the, get the cans and stuff downtown. So I've been working with Aaron to figure out where we're. Gonna go with that, but. Yeah.
One. New ones in the downtown area, they get used.
Yeah, um, we have fifteen now, but I'm, I'm gonna try to get it from down to twelve, which I think I can do. Um, but yeah, they, there are certain ones that get, get pretty hard, so. Um. So I'm not so much, but they're.
They're nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Jason, I'm so.
Big pickable started October sixth, that's Monday, right?
Yes, it is Monday.
Monday, October sixth.
No.
Sunday, October seventh. October seventh, sorry. We're, we're running the sweeper now, trying to get the loose stuff that's going. I, I think it might be kind of an early years drive, but it's, but we'll see.
How long do you reckon we pick up till frost or when?
We typically go through Thanksgiving early. I mean, it's kind of hit and miss, but it's four weeks is what it's scheduled for.
Depends on how soon snow flies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The flowers are now.
Flowers came down this morning, yep. Yep. They were starting to get kind of.
Some, a couple of people made that same comment.
Yeah.
They, they couldn't believe how full they were, but they said too, yeah, they're up to their life.
When you got them down, you could really tell too today that they were spending hours. Early on. They were at the combo site. Yeah. I don't know if they're still there or not, but that's really what. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Sure. Aaron, nothing?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got three more items. Um. Union negotiations, uh, I got recent notice from the teamsters that are wanting to negotiate with the police contract. Uh, Bill Supple Jr., who has been our negotiator, has retired. So I'm working with Amy Reasoner, who's with Lynch Dallas. We've worked with her on a number of different things. So we've started our contract with her and council approved that on the thirtieth. Basically based on their hours worked, what they need to do. Um. We did have a complaint, a citizen. Sent off a statement to me. Little over a week ago regarding employees smoking. Um, not in the city truck or anything like that, but he was on duty. And so the comment, and so that's where this handout came from, is our employee handbook. Um, regarding smoking, vaping and tobacco use. The last sentence in the third paragraph is something that I think we need to address. It states, further, all city employees are prohibited from using any tobacco products, including e-cigarettes and vaping devices while on duty. Or in any city facility, building, property or vehicle. The use of smoking on any city, city vehicle, property or vehicle or facility is under the Iowa Clean Air Act. So there's nothing on that. But. While on duty and any. Tobacco products are where we have some concerns, uh, because I do obviously have at least one employee that smokes. They can smoke, uh, in the alley. They can smoke off the city property. If they chose to, choose to do so, but not according to this. Uh, employee handbook. The other issue I have with this is with it saying any tobacco product, that means if you're chewing. Um, and we do have a number of employees that chew, more employees chew than they'd use, uh, cigarettes. My suggestion is we modify the employee handbook to address this and remove while on duty. So that they can still use tobacco products. But they cannot use them. But they cannot use them in a city vehicle, you know, on city property or a city facility. But, you know, if they're on duty, it's fine. Uh, so if the employee takes a break, goes out and has a cigarette, that, that's permissible. What's the council's feeling on this?
One, it's just one of the things, you're on duty, if you wanna go, um. If you're doing an inspection or something and you're not on. Grand system or whatever and you get, and you're not in the vehicle and you wanna have a cigarette real quick, I don't think you should have quacked out to have a cigarette. Or chew.
Sometimes it's just like having your Coca-Cola.
Okay, so basically what we'll bring back to you then on September thirtieth. Is we will strike while on duty, I believe that resolves that sentence. So, I'll present that to you, the, uh, third and final item is, uh, we're due for a wastewater treatment plant tour. Is there a time when the council would like to do that? Perry would be happy to show you around and talk about everything that's going on down there.
Yes, I would.
But that's, the council tells us how they'd like to handle this. Well, you could do it next week, the twenty-third, when you would have had a council meeting, but that got moved to the thirtieth. I've been there twice. That worked for the rest of the council?
Wait for this day, I'm all in.
It, it is an interesting facility, it, and it doesn't stink like everybody thinks it does. Aaron will handle the, uh, arrangements for the special council meeting then. Five P M. No, you should not attend unless we have a walker for you. Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then the final thing I do have is, uh, just as we started this meeting, I did have a glitch. With the owls, I'm not sure what's happened, the microphone stopped working, I changed the microphone to the computer. I believe it was capturing everything, but. I won't know until I download it and listen to it, in the meantime, it might be time for us to beat these owls, I don't know how long they survive. Uh, but we've had a couple of issues now. I think they've been knocked over a couple of times, so. I'm gonna look into, I'll beating those.
We might look at getting mounted once, we'll get some prices and bring them back.
And it's on a tripod. That, that's considerably more money. This has worked really well up until here recently, so again, it, it may just simply be, uh, the technology, we just need to change it out.
You gotta push on one next year.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an update, uh, there may be sound quality issues, we'll see.
I, the only thing I got is I'm just curious on how, um. Things at the airport, be able to move forward.
Uh, I received the go letter, I was gonna talk to the council about it on the thirtieth. Uh, as far as the process, the timeline, uh, basically we were notified that six hundred thousand dollars for our AIP funds is allocated. We already know we have the bill money, so next step is for the, uh, engineer. Um, Kirk and Michael to get the drawings put together, get the plans put together, uh, we do have a D V E. I can't remember what the acronym stands for right now. But we have to make sure we're in compliance with that and they're working with us on that. We'll have it on the thirtieth for you to review and understand what's going on.
I, uh, I talked to Tim about it, but then it was like two years, but, um, we'd like to do a goal setting session. I think it's been a year, I talked to him about that, I would like to get that on the books for December, that we do that again, so we'll have a goal setting session. Probably, um, work with, um, gentlemen from the Iowa League of Cities.
Mickey Shields.
Mickey Shields. So, I directed him to go ahead and start getting that put together.
The question you had is how we wanted to set that up?
Yeah, so we've done it where we've had the council and the. The department has all there and done all that stuff. Do we wanna do it where we're all there again together or let them kind of do their thing and then we meet? And get their suggestions as well and we can either add to what they have or. Add some of our own and whatever, it's, I'm just kind of looking for. Guys wanna think about that, we'll have more direction on that on the thirtieth. Yeah, so I'll take your input on that. Um, and, uh, happy belated with the show, it was almost twelve, I think last week. Anyway, um, with that, I have nothing else, thank everybody for being here tonight and, uh, having a motion from Bill. I'll take a second for your man or Jerry, and we are in.